Good evening. I call the City Council Committee of the Hall, meeting for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, to order. Yesterday, citizens of Davenport exercised their rights as voters to elect a new council and mayor and their school board for the coming years. And, you know, this is an important right. We have new people that will be coming on the council, those who will be leaving, and also a new person on our school board. So it's a heavy responsibility for these folks. And so let's take a moment of silence just to think about that and to think about the rights that we have in this country to exercise our right to vote. So a moment of silence. Alderman Ambrose, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, would you please call the roll?
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten. President, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Just a little bit about protocol for the meeting as we go through every session. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I welcome everyone in attendance who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device and also here in the chamber. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region. We're happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. At this time, we do ask you to turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic or handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur toward the end. And when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by me or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to a single member. You're asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And I ask, please, that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Alderman Spiegel, is there a city administrator update tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right. I just elevated you or not? I'm not sure which. We do have two public hearings this evening. One is for Public Works and the other for Finance. The first is for Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will discuss the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Public Works High and Low Bay Roof Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The second is for Finance. Alderman Condon will discuss this public hearing. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $41 million general obligation corporate and refunding bonds, Series 2022A. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. So a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes our public hearing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. We'll now move to petitions and communications from council members and mayor. Does anybody have anything tonight? Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose.
First of all, for the next two years, since I'm going to continue to be busy, I'm going to have my house cleaned tomorrow, which means I have to go home and clean my house. We all know how that works before you do that. I have a question for, I believe it's City Administrator Spiegel. When will we have the materials for the flood study special session so that we can look at them beforehand? Oh.
So Public Works is working with H.R. Green to have them ready for you later this week, likely on Friday.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Oh, and one other thing. I just wanted, you know, we're all looking at putting the COVID-19 behind us, but I'm back to remind that U.S. is still at the high risk. Our positivity rate is over 5% as a country, and Scott County is also high risk. We've got almost 150 positives for every 100,000. Scott County is the highest risk in the state, and our positivity rate is identified by the CDC as over 6%, but it's probably substantially higher than that because Iowa has been doing a very poor job of testing. So I just wanted to remind everyone that COVID is alive and well, and I'd like to keep all of us alive and well through this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. I don't see anyone else tonight. I have, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Doorman. Alderman Doorman.
I'd also just like to remind everyone that it is becoming flu season and that is a common cold that goes around all the time as well, but it can be prevented with a vaccine. So get your flu shot so we can prevent the flu from spreading around our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Nobody else? So I have a couple of things to add. First, for Third Ward, the Third Ward November meeting will be a special sneak peek tour of the Call Building at Ripley and West Third Street, and that will take place on Saturday, November 13th, at 11:00 a.m. We will let other folks who are interested come. There is, it is still work being done, but we will see finished apartments and we'll have a sneak peek at the Capitol Theater, which I hear has some amazing work done. So if you'd like to join us, you gather at the front entrance of the Call Building at 11 o'clock on Thursday, November 13th, or that's the time the tour will start. Developer Chris sales will be our guide, and I look forward to seeing you there. So that's going to be fun, I think. We also are marking tonight, the last night of one of our colleagues, and that's Alderman Miller, who has been with us for a number of months and has done a great job in filling in in an absent situation. And we want to thank him tonight. And I'm sure Alderman Miller, we have something to present to you, but I know that his colleagues probably have some things they would like to say as well. So I will open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak. Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Pro Tem, McGinnis. And Alderman Miller, Dr. Miller, I really appreciate your time on the City Council. It was a short time period, but it is mind blowing, the topics that you had presented in front of you and the way in that short period of time, the amount of things you were able to handle and get accomplished in a short period of time. It's also, it was quite a bit of work that was more than a lot of us would see within our own wards in a two-year cycle, and you saw it in a couple of months. So you tackled some major issues, and I always also really appreciated your perspective you brought on everything. It seemed that every single time you spoke, I found myself thinking differently or questioning things, and you have a great way of bringing a new thought, perspective to council, and it's been great working with you, and I really appreciate you taking the time in order to serve the city.
Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to echo those sentiments, Dr. Miller. So I told you when you came on that, you know, in my opinion, there's no greater honor than being an alderman in the city of Davenport, and I feel like you certainly rose to that level of service where it would be easy as somebody who's a fill-in and only here for a short time to, you know, kind of show up and vote, but you didn't do that. You played a big part in deciding how we spent our ARPA dollars. You stepped into a situation on 35th Street and really represented those residents extremely well. That was great leadership on your part, and you've dealt with the neighborhood issues that come up. And I appreciate your effort and your time on the council. You filled in perfectly. You did the job you were asked to do, and I certainly appreciate that. So, thank you.
Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Dr. Miller, it's a pleasure to get to meet you and work with you over these past few months. Echo what Alderman Doorman and Alderman Gripp said, you know, specifically for me, the one thing that I will definitely take away was just your poignant comments and how you really hit the nail on the head when we had our session about spending those ARPA dollars and your rubric and, you know, those five points to pay attention to. That was something that I, you know, had never thought of, and it really helped bring things home for me. And so, you know, I appreciate you helping out a fellow council member in that short period of time, and I wish you well. And if I ever find a little bit of time, I might want to audit one of your classes because I'm sure it'd be very enjoyable.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Joe. Stepping up to the plate and helping our great city move forward. As a longtime business professor, these must be pretty exciting times for you as we watch our economy going through these struggles, you know, taking these young minds and letting them know what's going to happen down the road. I appreciate your volunteeriness, help the city, and if there's ever anything I can do to help you out, you know, you are at Ambrose University.
Alderman Lee.
Thank you. And I really have nothing to add. I mean, I have also learned so much from you, except what I do want to ask you to consider is staying involved in city government. There's lots of ways to serve, and I can really see that you could make a big difference. It doesn't only have to be as an alderman, but maybe in the future you would consider that as well. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Condon.
I will never forget, so I hadn't met you previously, but I was very impressed by your resume, and so much so, I didn't know whether to call you alderman or doctor, and then I forgot that your name was Miller. So that was my first impression on you. I apologize for that. One of my favorite things about this job is just being in the room with really smart people, and I always appreciated being in the room with you and listening to you think out loud in paragraphs. And just thank you again for stepping up to the role, and I hope that you will lend your talents to the city and will be the beneficiaries of that again in the future. So thank you for serving.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Dickman.
Basically, just echoing the same comments of everyone else, but especially Alderman Lee and Condon saying, you know, you don't need to go that far. I understand if you want to take a little break after the drinking out of the fire hose experience of getting started as an alderman, but yeah, please, please come back when you've had a little rest from us.
Alderman Dunn.
I want to say, I can't, my colleagues have covered pretty much everything, but I would like you to express our thank you to your family who has allowed you to serve the community. I know that takes a big toll on them sometimes, so please pass our thank you along to them as well.
Could get you to come forward, come up to the dais, and we're all going to join you up here. Let's all move in. So Alderman Miller, it's my great honor, on behalf of Mayor Mattson, who could not be here, I'll speak up. City of Davenport, Dr. Joseph C. Miller, Seventh Ward Alderman, May 27th, 2021, November 8th, 2021. Thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Davenport and the residents of Seventh Ward and to this council, I might add. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. If there's something you would like to say, you may use that.
Thanks, everyone. And thank you. Yeah, that's cool. That's appropriate for me to be. When I first got to Davenport, my entire intent was just to exercise a will to serve the city since I've moved here. I haven't lived in Davenport long or the Quad Cities. This is my fifth year, but this feels like home to me in more than any place I've lived in my entire adulthood, and I'm very happy to serve the city in this way and to serve the city going forward from this moment. This has been a tremendous learning experience for me, one that I will, some of the experiences I've had over the summer and in fall, I will always cherish the ability to make these decisions and some of the things that I have been doing in classroom, some of the things that we've experienced here, I've had a new perspective on things I bring to the classroom and to my life. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Can you put the mic down? Yes. Thanks. Are we going to squeeze it? Yeah. No. Alderman Ambrose, can you last taste it?
I want to get too close to the headlock.
He bites. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, then we're going to do one on the phone, too. All right, Max, two, three.
All right. Is everybody settled? Okay. Next on our agenda are the four areas for discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. Our first area to be discussed is community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead the discussion, and Alderman Woman Lee will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case ORD 21-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning by amending various subsections thereto. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council to comment? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-04, being the request of the City of Davenport to rezone 143 acres, more or less, of property located near 320 West Kimberly Road, generally being bound by Northwest Boulevard, Kimberly Road, Brady Street, East 42nd Street, Welcome Way, and the North Lot Line and North Park Mall from C-3 General Commercial to C-C City Center District. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council care to comment? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And item number three is a resolution approving case F-21-04, being the request of Speedway LLC for a final plat of Speedway LLC Davenport Commercial Park Edition, a two-lot subdivision on 16.74 acres located at 8320 Hillendale Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this resolution? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I would ask that Alderwoman Lee please set our agenda.
I move that all three items under community development be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development. Thank you.
Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Jobchin will lead the discussion. Alderwoman Dickman will set the agenda. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. Item number one, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking" by adding Lewis-Rich Court along both sides from West Lake Boulevard east to its terminus. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Parking" by adding Villa Drive along both sides from Villa Court south 300 feet. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, second consideration ordinance amending schedules 14 and 15 of Chapter 10.96 by changing Marquette Street at 12th Street from pedestrian traffic signals to intersection traffic signals. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 17 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "No Stopping, Standing, or Parking" by adding 54th Street along the south side from Pine Street west 550 feet between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on school days. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number five, motion approving a noise variance request for an event on the listed date and time. J&amp;M Displays Incorporated Christmas in the Village fireworks, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, December 4, 2021, 8:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., fireworks over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And last, item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read the new license, new owner temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, and then the annual license renewals are listed for everyone's review. And so the new licenses are, first Coffee House QC, 1315 Jersey Ridge Road, new license, license type beer/wine. And then next, Yummy Crab, 1235 East Kimberly Road, new license, type Class C liquor. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? I would then ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Same sign? Back to you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will lead this discussion, and Alderman Doorman will set the agenda. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have 10 items this evening. Item number one is a first consideration of an ordinance adding Chapter 13.40 to the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Public Water Supply Well Protection." Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Doorman.
Brian, would it be possible to come and explain the reasoning behind this ordinance as well as providing an update on the Genesis well project?
Brian Schad, Public Works. This is actually a request through Scott County by the Iowa DNR. When you drill a new public water supply well, and that's when it feeds the larger number of folks, this does not impact private wells. When you drill those new wells, you're given a table of separation distances from potential contamination sources. What this does is any wells that have been drilled in the future, this protects them from contamination sources being placed within those separation distances after they've been established. So it's basically a protection measure for those public water wells. At this point, the Scott County, Genesis, and Iowa American are finishing up their well plans and permits. This is one piece of that. They need to have this in place prior to receiving a permit, and they hope to go out to bid later this winter.
And so this ordinance, though, impacts the entire city and any future well Iowa American might drill, not just the one that is currently being worked on in Genesis?
That is correct. The intent is the entire city.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Jobchin.
Brian, sorry. Stay there. Just a quick question. As I was reading through this, what's like the accrediting agency or, you know, what are the kind of standards, you know, for which some of these distances, you know, I guess are set or are they just arbitrary? Because some distances seem pretty, 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 pretty short and close to the well, you know, five feet here, 25 feet, those types of things. So is there something that says, yep, this is what it should be or?
This is under the jurisdiction of the Iowa DNR, and they are advised through the EPA as far as those potential distances. Another portion of this is a difference between shallow and deep wells. In our area, you'd see most of the public water supply wells is very deep, 1,000 feet, quarter mile deep, et cetera. And those have those different distances because of the rock layers that are in between.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Anyone else? Brian, you know, when we started this project, we had a briefing from Genesis and Scott County, and it started out to be one well for backup for Genesis, and now it seems to me it's a little bit more than that. So is there any way we can get an update of what their actual plans are going to be for, because this is going to affect, quite honestly, the whole system, correct?
That is correct. The intent of Scott County Emergency Management and Iowa American working together is they're putting together a grant package for submittal for additional wells. At this time, they talk of six to seven throughout the system, including the city of Beddendorf, city of Bluegrass, et cetera. And their intent is to have enough capacity through these additional wells to be able to fully feed all of their current clients, roughly about 16 million gallons per day in the event that the current water source, the Mississippi River, is somehow contaminated or there is an issue with that intake. So basically, a full redundancy of the system.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Brian, we first talked about this. We talked about the impact to the neighborhood, and the suggestion was, why don't they move the drilling away from the neighborhood? You've got acres of green space on the backside of the hospital. Now, if they're going to continue to drill wells, and they're going, trying to get a grant, you know, I guess I'm a little disappointed that they chose to build in a neighborhood that, over the last 20 years, has been impacted by continuous building at the hospital. And now we have, if they was right, they're going to be drilling for months. It just seems unfair to a neighborhood that Scott County would not consider moving it out and away from the neighborhood. And I thought after our original discussion, that was going to be the direction, but apparently not.
We went on, Scott County, Iowa American, Genesis, and staff representative, and also some of the aldermen here did meet with those neighbors, talked through the project, answered quite a few questions, and received very good positive feedback after the fact.
Well, hey, you know, there being sold a bill of goods when in reality, you've been around long enough to move it a few hundred yards would have zero impact on the neighborhood. So I'm a little disappointed.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Condon.
With respect to the larger vision, I guess I just will add, I've been curious as to when or should I weigh into this and, because it's a pretty mundane item on the agenda, but it does represent a potential large shift to the way that our water sources come to us, but I'm just not sure it falls under our jurisdiction. I just have had a lot of questions raised by this, and it's my understanding that the Iowa DNR and the EPA will do everything they need to do to look at our aquifer and make sure that this is as straightforward as it appears to be. But for me, it's been very curious, and because you alluded to the potential of additional wells throughout the Quad Cities, it will be a topic of interest. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Doorman.
Thanks, Brian. And I think in summary, what I'm maybe getting from everyone is, before we proceed with this, can we maybe have a follow-up with Iowa American specifically on the Genesis project and making sure that their final plans, we see a version of that before we get too far down this road, but then even potentially maybe what their long-term strategic vision may look like of where these wells are going, what wards, what neighborhoods, what communities might be impacted. And we probably could do it informally via an email, or maybe we can find a time on a Tuesday. I don't know if we have any free time coming up or not, but it seems that everyone's pretty concerned with that in terms of just wells in our community and this ordinance kind of being the method to getting that done, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Public Works High and Low Bay Roof Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 43rd Street, Michigan to Elsie Reconstruction Projects by Five Cities Construction of Coal Valley, Illinois, in the amount of 246,000. Illinois, in the amount of $246,699.76. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the River Center South Roof Replacement Project by Economy Roofing and Insulation Company of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $540,660. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Abrams.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, roofing is a pretty interesting project. What kind of guarantee and how long will this last? Because I've known roofs that have been replaced and have failed within months of them being replaced, and something of this significance.
So Clay Merritt, Public Works, I can go back and check. Normally, when we do roofing projects, we buy an extended warranty typically in the span of 15 to 20 years as part of the project. So in case it does fail, it's generally within its life cycle that we can go ahead and have the contract to go and repair it. But I'll check specifically on this particular project, but typically, we do five to 20-year extended warranties.
Well, my question is, a half a billion dollars, once we sign off, is we got to get a contract, we got to get an insurance policy to cover it? How long will they cover their work?
That's what I'll, that's what I'll check on, and I'll send something to you, to the entire council later, sometime tomorrow.
Thanks, Clay. Thank you, Alderman Abrams. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the Goose Creek Shared Use Trail from 53rd Street to 59th Street and Brady Project to Midwest Concrete in the amount of $1,486,333.14. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the Prospect Park Sewer Separation Project to Legacy Corporation in the amount of $498,543.07. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for the Federal Transit Administration for four battery-powered electric buses to include charging station infrastructure. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Yes, I was very excited to see, yeah, very excited to see this. And I hope that our environmental sustainability resolution will be helpful in this grant application. Could you tell us a little more?
Yep. So we have applied for this before. In this particular case, we did add that the council had passed that resolution in April. The last go-around when we applied, Iowa City was successful. Obviously, this would be new for us. The charging infrastructure is specific to buses. It can't be used for regular vehicles. So should we purchase plain electric vehicles? We would need additional charging infrastructure. That's one thing we did check on. And then another item of note is that should we award, get, receive the grant, Mid-American Energy is also committed to help with our match, which is really exciting. And then, so I guess, obviously, being a pilot, it would be very interesting knowing how these fit in with our community and our routes. Obviously, it's not 100% the same across different communities with, with different, the way things are in our bridges and things like that. So I think it would be good to have a grant for us to test it out before kind of fully committing to really know how it fits in with our system.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Alderman Doran.
Nicole, have we explored other types of vehicles or renewable energy-type things in order to convert either bus fleet or other trucks, things like that, or have we really just kind of locked in on corn or on electric instead of like corn-powered biodiesel, things like that?
So for the buses specifically, a lot of the grants available right now are specific to electric. So that's kind of why we focused in on this one. We do have a new fleet manager. You know, every time we do get a significant amount of money, we look at our options. A lot of times, you know, it is cost prohibitive, especially without the infrastructure. So any of those alternative fuels you're talking about come with their own set of different infrastructure that we'd have to install at Public Works. It comes with additional training for our mechanics. So it's not just a let's be green. There's, there's many steps to it. So obviously, when it's a good fit, like we, with a grant attached, those are the ones we generally try to get that seed money so that we can understand it better.
Yeah, and I just think, too, that biodiesel, and I think we could even grow the corn that fuels our bus here within our city limits. So that could be a unique avenue to go down to if possible, and if money's available. So just when you guys are out looking for new grants and things, I think that would be a nice alternative in addition to electricity, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Doran. Alderman Abrams.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. MetroLink is a national leader in transit. Do they have electric?
Yep, they do. They've gotten this, I want to say they've had two electric bus grants. So they have a couple in their fleet now and again. And there's kind of a specific way you can use them depending, they are taller, so there are certain bridge requirements and heights and things like that. But they have had success, from my understanding, with their initial purchase.
All right, good. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Alderman Abrams. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Thank you, Nicole. Item number eight is a motion approving the Davenport Municipal Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion to defer sidewalk installation at 3311 Research Parkway. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a motion to defer sidewalk installation along Zenith Avenue, south and northwest Boulevard for Russell, Fry, Armstrong Industrial Park, First Edition. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Doran, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I've moved to place item number one on the discussion agenda and all other items on the consent.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes Public Works this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Alderman Dunn. Our final area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Condon will lead this discussion, and Alderman Miller will set the agenda. Alderman Condon.
Thank you. We have four items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution making provisions for the issuance of not to exceed $41 million general obligation corporate and refunding bond Series 2022A. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? That item will move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement with MetroLink regarding the $1.2 million grant award by the Passenger Ferry Grant Program of the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5307, for the replacement and enhancement to the Lindsay Park Channel Cat dock system. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Item will move on. Number three is a resolution approving the payment of $148,849.82 to Tyler Technologies, Inc. of Fallmoth, Maine, for the annual licensing of the Munis software system for the period of November 1, 2021, to October 31, 2022. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? And finally, item number four is a resolution setting a public hearing for the purpose of amending the North Urban Renewal Plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Could someone come up and explain a little bit more about the North Urban Renewal Plan?
Bruce Burger, Community and Economic Development. This is our annual TIF, internal policy is basically what we do, which sets up the dollars that we'll use for administering the TIF grant over the coming years. And we have a number of TIF grants, so it impacts a number of city departments.
Seeing no one else, that item will move on. Below on our agenda, we have purchases from 10,000 to 50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed there for your information. Alderman Dr. Miller, will you please set the agenda?
I move that we place all items on consent agenda.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? Is there any public with business? If you do, please step to the podium, state your name and address or ward, and you will have five minutes to speak.
My name's Dale Gilmore. I live in the 6th Ward. Years ago, there was a commercial on TV, and the setting of the, of the commercial was there was a big social event. There were all these people, you could hear glasses dinging and, and people talking, people talking. And then somebody would say, well, E.F. Hutton says, and the room went quiet. And it, well, when E.F. Hutton speaks, people listen. And when Dr. Miller speaks, people listen. And I thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill, the 11th Ward, 4th also Nashville, Tennessee. I have to second everything that Dale said about, Dale said about Dr. Miller. Just a couple things, very briefly. The idea about increasing tourist attractions to our city on, on the website, Facebook, they've got, I think it's Mississippi Valley, a web page, and one of the things that is obvious is, and welcome, is all the passenger ships that are docking in Davenport going up and down. And it's exposing the Quad City area to a whole new group of people from the United States and probably internationally as well. And, and I think there's no telling what, over the years, what impact that will have in, in showing people what a beautiful and vibrant community we have here. So with that in mind, a couple things that, as someone who's lived most of his life outside of this area, I think we tend, perhaps, tend to forget about the things that are so common to us, like the river and the things that are spawning, spawned from the river over all these years. A couple things come to mind. The Channel Cat, actually, I meant to talk something about that landing. Earlier in the year, I was fortunate to be on a special Channel Cat that, that started from Lindsay Park, but rather than going toward Moline, it actually went downstream toward the dam. This was by, with Josh Duffy, the musician extraordinaire, talking about Big Spiderback. It seems to be, maybe we're missing something, not having the Channel Cat go closer to the government bridge and the dam. And especially now that the, the tour boats are, you know, they're disembarking at Heritage Park. I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to explore maybe having a Channel Cat dock right there as well. And not to upset things, perhaps that'd be a better place than where it is at Lindsay Park, because the experience of getting so near that, that dam and that bridge is unmistakable. Couple other things, though. At that area where all those boats are docking, one of our assets, and I've probably mentioned it in the past, and probably you all know about it, some of you more than others, but the Leclerc Mansion, if you go up there, there's, one of the things that's very sad, there's a sign up there about the renovation of the Leclerc Mansion, and it was apparently done maybe 20 years ago. The sign is peeling away. And if you look at the Leclerc Mansion, the paint of the Leclerc Mansion is peeling away. And it, it's one of the, probably the, one of the prettiest sights in all of Mississippi. And if we were to, to spiff up that mansion, have it something that people are drawn to or sent to, as well as the village, as well as the figure, as well as everything else, I think it'd be something that's, really, something that'd be unforgettable to our visitors. And I can understand maybe why we don't want to do it. There's a big expenditure. But on, and at the other time, other hand, it's drawing people in areas that probably aren't as nice as we would like them to be. But, you know, I think we have to, you know, take the bitter with the sweet there. And, and if you do that, ultimately, that area is going to come up. And just like the Village of East Davenport came up. So I think that's a real opportunity the long run. And Kathy Wine's Bridge, the 1856 Bridge replica of one span, I think that, and I know she's been working on it, but gosh, if the city had some way to, to give some additional seed money for that, what a $4 million project. Besides having a functional aspect of going from the Y, the Y area across River Drive, again, I think that would be an unmistakable thing, unforgettable thing. And people would make a big impact to the visitor, to the visitors, as well as the residents that we have. And, and I'll go back to my last one, which is having a true steamboat landing, a Main Street landing. And I'll go into that more, in more detail in the future. But I think all those things together, on top of what we currently have, would make, make the Quad Cities, especially Davenport, a real star and, and something that people would remember. Thanks so much.
Anyone else? Are there any other reports of city officials? Attorney Warner?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to report to you that, and the council that I've received sufficient guidance, and the executive session tonight is not necessary, so you can go toward your regular adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned.